It's gonna be a regular meeting of the Lakeview City Commission, that is May 26, 2021, at 6:15 PM. Commissioner Radman?
Here.
Mr. Staley?
Here.
Mr. Basley?
Yep.
Myself, Jack Schenkam here, City Manager.
Yes, sir.
And City Attorney.
Here.
I would like to show that Commissioner Jones was absent. If you would please stand for the flag and the other prayer.
Okay, let us pray. Lord, our rock and redeeming, thank you that you are perfectly faithful. You never forget, never fail, and never take back a promise. As we meet, may we give thanks to you with our whole heart as we recount all of your wonderful blessings, family, friends, neighbors, communities, countries, and the world. Blessed be you tonight, all those prayers, ready us to make every moment count. Receive your clarity and your peace in all this evening. Father, we pray for our frontline providers and caregivers, strengthen them, guide them, and protect them in their greater favor. Praying always for those who are in Jesus' name.
My allegiance to the flag of the renowned states of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four minute. I'll make a motion for a briefly agenda point. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. One recognition by the mayor. Any person may address the commission on any subject not included on the agenda. Speakers are requested to give their name and address to the reporting clerk for the record and to come forward to the commission table and speaking. Please be as quick as possible and maybe give remarks for minutes. Additional time may be given about the commission if necessary. No official action can be taken, but direction may be given to staff. Commissioner Johnson?
I'll make a motion if there's discussion or anything, I'll make a motion to approve the dissent of January 21st.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Number two. Financial report obtained in January 2021.
So what's being presented or critical is the financial statements or the financial reporting from October 21st. We retain record first without question. The meter project is almost fully installed because they have a few commercial meters at this point. But they're close if not all of those commercials installed. Service line replacements, they've started working on them weekly. And that is probably one of the more tedious and difficult tasks and projects of their other way. I gotta get them on. And the way they're choosing those when they were installed in the meter and determining the quality of the pipe, that will put their basis for where to start and what we're putting. So as a result, for the concern inherent in these businesses, new sidewalk has been put in place over by people's cemetery or on the west side of the football field. Everyone's from people's cemetery, operate those favorite local things, one in the front center, the big walk-in path to the town hall from middle and high school. So one business, second sister slowed down, but soon after this past week, we had a couple of them. They wanted to stay quiet for an occupational license in the cafe, so we're glad about that. They're kind of sell coffee, authentic coffee industry in the town. There are actively contract fighting businesses and kind of increase the tax base and level. That, you have any questions? If you have any questions, you can refer to the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reporting for the period of October 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Item number three is budget calendar.
Mayor, the budget calendar is where you just review the, see and review and look at it. Starts in January with putting together capital budget, costs and cash flows, and then it goes to the capital throughput budget approved tonight. We'll talk about the pay scale later. Performance evaluations begin in August, includes with hearings in August and final adoption in September. Happens systematically. Item number four, personnel policy. Personnel policy is before you, the few things that are really in personnel policy is that we have a section on pandemic leave. So in case we continue to have pandemic thing going away, we've got something in our personnel policy to cover that. The other thing is minimum wage is technically go to $15 an hour by September 3, 2026. Right now, we're about $10 an hour, I think it's $15. And pay plan is going up to about $11 an hour, so we can start getting closer to 15 by 2026. Those are the two paper ones, and with that increases, why was some of the others?
I have two questions. Okay, on the leave, on their pay schedule. I know that normally they show what they have every month, correct? I don't get it on mine.
Well, you're not doing it on yours.
No, okay, sure. And then, I guess my question to you. By December the 31st, if you have more than 30 days, right? You lose, let's say, about a
To vacation?
Right. If I had 40 days, I don't know, but if I had 40 days, I would lose 1000 of these, right? Um.
No two weeks.
Are they, right, are they, yes, are they made aware of this to make sure that they
They sign, they sign this every one of them, every year. They sign it so they read it, or they don't, they don't work it.
Okay, yeah, I understand. Then on the grievance, now I understand the chain of command, that's not my question, problem. But when they, the grievance process, once they go through the chain of command, then you, 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 the end. With the commissioner, if we have a grievance, do we ever get a report, a grievance report?
No.
Will we ever?
No. Just to bring the end of the vote. You've charged me to handle the employees, because that's the only, at last, I can give you someone else, and then do it with either. Don't want to be third, you're third.
Okay, okay, I guess my concern is, let's say that the employee doesn't agree with the, the final decision. If they have a grievance.
They could disagree, and then tell me that, and if that's efficient, which means that I can tell them to do it.
Okay, I'm, it wasn't, okay. The reason why, because it really wasn't, I understand, you know, the chain of command, that was the problem. It's just that I wanted to make sure that, you know, because I don't want nothing to go up in our, we don't know what's going back. Okay. That was, that was my concern. That's all, that's all I can do. Sure thing, does this, you agree?
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2021 through 2022 personnel policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Number five, legislature appropriation. Discussion.
This is the one that briefly talked about in the public hearing, that talking about potentially replacing a water tank that was 80 years old. It costs about $750,000 to replace, and appropriations replaced at $495. Heard from some of that, it looks positive. Say that, if you're giving that. Already has a house, though, House 3613. All of it is inspected by a third party, you see what I said? There's just information. Be aware that that's, okay.
If, if money, saying, we're smiled on, the legislature, for which we're running. How far down the road, in terms of longer years, would we be looking to, to come up with a balance for?
We're probably talking a few years. Take that long to design it, which is, our contribution will come on the table, but, so we've got, we've got the, if, if it passed this last session, we've got plenty of, no, it's not, in, how many, that.
Any other discussion? Item number six, resolution number 2021-01, adopting a local mitigation strategy.
This is a strategy for Union County as a whole, and we're part of that. So Union County's approved the mitigation strategy from their side of it, we need to approve it, and the other cities inside being, also being asked to approve it. It opens up female reimbursements and puts her up in the, so to speak. This, this is a very positive issue.
You know, I made a motion that we approve the resolution 2021-01, adopting a local mitigation, about title.
Resolution number 2021-01, the resolution of the city of Lakeview, adopting a local mitigation strategy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. One inch number 2021, they're showing more than initiation of land.
We were, we were giving, giving some land, and it was just on the edge of the city, and so we wanted to voluntarily add our new property into the city.
If anybody isn't aware, where it's located at, it's at the intersection of Southwest 12th Avenue and Southwest 6th Street. There's a sliver of land, triangular shape, that runs between the old track that and the 121 West 12th Avenue. I looked at it, if I remember right, it's a couple acres, and it's, it's crumbled, but it'd be a really good, because the shape of it, it's odd, but it looks like it'd be a really good place for some kind of business, because it is. It's running north, south, it's a couple of hundred feet, and then it's several hundred feet. Is it a corner lot? Yeah, it's, it's a corner lot, but it's a track, it's, it's a corner lot at the corner of Southwest 12th Avenue and 6th Street. Southwest 6th, running west from 12th Avenue along the right away of 6th Street.
Was that Warren's property?
Yes.
It's right down, yeah.
It is the Warren property, correct, he donated it.
It'd be a good place for a business.
Did he sell it, or he donated it?
He donated it. He's not coming back. I say one year.
Only thing that I would mention, in reference to the commercial renovation, we do have to bring this property in after this is approved. We have to bring it into our comprehensive plan, so all of the, we could want to have a commercial, especially what you want to do. We directly, uh, very helpful to do, to see the direction, so this, so you're aware.
We, well, we submitted application to find out, and others have to be approved first, but
Right, right.
Uh, yeah, for obvious reasons, but, uh, we were requesting going with four commissions for this, and we also, we're going to use regular with the same. That will, you'll see that on the
That's all looking in the future. But she's right, first you do the annexation, then you do the rest of that.
Any, uh, motion? I'll make one. Yeah, we have a motion to approve the first reading, item number 2021-01.
Ordinance number 2021-01, ordinance of the city of Lakeview, pursuant to petition number 8x21-01, relating to voluntary annexation, making finding, and Xing 2, including within the boundaries of the city of Lakeview, Florida, certain real property located in Union County, Florida, which is reasonably intact and continues to the boundaries of the city of Lakeview, Florida, providing several buildings, fulfilling all ordinances and conditions, and providing an effective data.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Ready to go to the rest?
Mayor, the direct vote raises your standard for people, down in Lakeview. You gotta start planning and promoting that, several other people are coming here, but the, the big question overhanging in all this topic. So I'm proceeding with that, and David's been doing a good job of communicating with the organizers, the other communities. And apparently other communities aren't actually about the public.
Yes, this past weekend, he actually held their, it was like, um, like every other, last year, for home, the poster, that they, went ahead with it this year and planned, um, spaces for the vendors and devised, you know, might be so efficient, or have. The Rockland County Strawberry Festival is taking place this year up in Oakmont. They just go to the, for March 27th and 28th, move having it in downtown, start the holding in that area, to have a little space. And, you know, invite people to, to practice those. Meeting out, or, you know. I think that, um, areas are going that way, instead of having it in or, you know, or in the industrial area of, starting from.
I guess my only concern is, if you say wear mask, you've got something that, don't you, like, is gonna have a problem with that?
That, as far as I'm concerned, we're all
I know, I mean, right, I'm just saying, I'm just bringing this up.
Well, the, the county doesn't have any ordinances, the guidelines regarding that, the city doesn't. My thinking about it was, people that wanna wear a mask, do, can, and they've got precautions, they've got essential distancing, and then to hopefully buy, or, or more people choose to do it, and try to, to inoculate, and so I'm, I'm hoping that everybody else could, as far as saying, to recover it from all this.
I think people have a good time, people have a good time.
Yeah, and vaccination locations are expanding, but it's sort of, of Walmart, public, and Vicky stores are now offering the vaccine. What else does, give them a wife there, taking, taking, or holding on?
And I'd like rest time there, right? We've got enough order now, they'll have a bit of order under their tables, so we'll be starting up so much, but that creates a lot of, now. So what we need to do, I guess, is decide whether or not we wanna move forward and go ahead and schedule the rest.
Sign the contract, you gotta go forward with the rest. People that last year, just couldn't live, we got to.
I'm gonna make a motion, whether they wanna do it or not.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, move, move it to the direct vote race as of April the 10th, and authorize the, the minister.
Who's the mayor?
Mayor, the
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
Well, this, this will also, we'll decide with the thought process of July 4th. That's coming down the pipeline right after.
I know, I mean, I was looking at the news in 2019, I know they often identify that we have a good percent of the country.
Yeah, since there's so much, like, not, you know, nobody
Maybe a good percent, yeah, yeah. They won't, not really, I'm happy, I'm shocked.
Yeah, item number nine, development of strategic plan.
Where we, we have got in the works a strategic plan, if you will, too. Looking at a five-year issue where outlines the, like, the vision of the community. You can look at what we want to do and how we're gonna get there, with some goals and objectives. We have a $5,000 grant from Interpol, Florida. They've agreed to fund the strategic plan. Dr. Robert E. Lee, who is president of a very prestigious group, is going to agree to host it for us. And there'll be a one-day event, you all are, we're gonna be able to film. The contract is for $3,000 for Dr. Lee, and then $2,000 for Ford State University, to write it all up.
And then doing that, with that process, will maybe, uh, handing the community, uh, the commission, or inviting the, uh, give them some idea of, uh, leadway to that.
Well, it's, it's gonna be open to the public. We're going through, planning on, thinking about doing a community center, and having a five or six roundtable with Commissioner E. Warner, and a lot of discussions within that. Probably have co-agencies, soon, to talk about his projects, and things he's doing, with, uh, several, and stuff. And when the commissioner and the community can see that, I know, it won't be in the Right now, you have a strategic plan in the budget, which was the, after, uh, was the one that we designed, this was, Seth designed, uh, as well, too. This is, uh, this is entirely, my part. Any steps, there's a message for you to, to, to talk on that, though.
Motion for the learning strategic plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from local government advisors, to facilitate the, the, any process to consider that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Okay. Lady manager, recall.
You have the, the manager report, you got a chance to look at it, the main issue is if you look at the pictures on it, uh, October, we started tearing down buildings from the downtown, and in February, we're, he's, he's rising. We have early traffic issues, and they probably, who would've thought, they probably had traffic. We also talked about the, one, I mean, the
I don't know. I don't think they have two, two, three. Probably, uh, the, the
I call that the, the I have a, I have a mix it, but
Mr. Ed, Ed, he's on the phone, he can come up.
She's the letter from the, uh, the, the county high school junior art teacher. Thanking us for the use of our American, our state plans. Oh, yeah. Y'all may or may not accept the bold, smart Florida water treatment plan being had. There's a good side, and there's a good side to Lakeview and its current water and sewer system. It cannot be act, because it is a stonehead, it's wired in for the internet and in the action. So we dodged that bullet, the only thing we might have to do is do a little, a little improving on our physical security. And I think Mr. Douglas is working toward that. But in the future, hopefully, if I see you down the road, while we'll have the convenience of being able to look at our cell phone, and see how the lift stations are operating, and how the water supply, then, it'd be an added advantage. But then we'll also make sure that our ITP will stay on top of the hatches. Commissioner.
Um, so I think I have this, uh, now that the vote base is approved, uh, uh. You can, the city can just send a contract, or if they're voting outlaw, I'll reach out to my contact, Dave Jackson, and then advise. Uh, given that they've created a flyer. And if you guys still have a gift of, you know, you've donated, like, you'll create something, have a statement to the company.
If you still have. Ready for that? Can we do it? So.
Someone will have it, and then. Nine, uh, two, that. He said the whole month.
Mine's nice.
What, what, what is that?
He asked, uh, we had a. That's all I got.
Commissioner Biggsler? Oh, I have it. Commissioner Reddick?
Uh, just, uh, the farm share that we, yes, yeah. Uh, looks like we'll do a show of volunteer, but it was okay. Everything that came, it was already, right, ready to be given out. We did all three hundred and twenty-five plans, and they came, we watched thirteen. And I was looking, we're going to do the vote race, that's the second strategy, I'm going to go best, all contact, exactly. And see if we can move it, what we, good one, all that. And that's the second.
You want that?
No, 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 no.
And don't forget the third Saturday is when the mobile bathroom.
What do you say?
Yeah, the chief's what, ten, what?
Uh, nine.
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 Now, down here?
Mm-hmm. Where we do the drive-through, that's where he, um, that's other mobile, just to let you know.
Okay.
Try to send it to eight.
We are feeling all the heck. Lucy. We first, I don't know, okay. Who, the, 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 the. Well, but now, we, we, I mean, now, we're pretty much done. Okay, so now, but I mean, I don't know if you.
We'll figure that.
Okay, that's, that's it for me.
There, uh.
Call it here.
This is my issue, I follow my issue for.
I should buy, I don't have any additional.
And one thing y'all may want to start thinking about is marketing for both. All the ranking.
Yeah, that's.
I know it's a little ways away, but that lie is going to be probably. I don't know.
Since you're into the way the community would say, and you can get the wish, and you don't.
I would do that for you.
I think the last time, maybe not, okay, the area.
There was a little upfront, I think a lot of people stayed right there about the water, and I was really annoyed.
And blocked Third Street, because they won't let the voters get in and out, block their votes, that was a big issue. People going back and forth on Third, just watching, calling, calling.
Do you want to talk about, uh, what's to handle the lottery, what are those boxes going to be?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't remember them talking about the lottery. That's, that's got approved.
Yeah, they approved it, uh, so it's got to be curving, go there, probably, so one hundred, they said, uh. We're not efficient, especially outside of town, about hospital, also a curve over there, so we got to move to one hundred, I don't know, one twenty one. For the room, and, you know, the stadium lot, where.
Where's the start?
The start side of Red Lot. That, one hundred, one twenty one, and it goes all the way down to nine, nine, I don't know, that's just, that last side of all room. The way to go, and, and through, down one twenty one.
Basically, what it is, which is people here that don't want to talk about it.
Okay, so it's for Veterans Day, uh, they're going to do, uh, I guess sponsorship, if you call it, for a cross, you can get a name on it. There'll be probably around three foot tall cross, with a flag by, behind it, that's when we put up, you know. Uh, I want to say it's about two weeks. Uh, so we, we have the dates and everything, I don't actually have them written, but it's really nice, a lot of communities and counties around us are actively. I thought they got a lot of people to, to kind of order there.
I should go shop, I ask you for the problems.
Yep, uh, Nancy.
Griffiths.
Griffiths. She's heading up all of, making the crossing and everything, we're going to be the ones, you know, put them out, or help them put out, since we're on the front of it, but. Definitely does real good.
Yeah, McQueen did it, looks very nice.
Yeah, yeah, McQueen was the one that, uh, that looked really nice, uh. Williston, I think, does it over there, there's probably more and more counties that have, that have put it out.
Very different, very.
Yeah.
May not continue to be different, but you're.
Yeah, so.
We got, we got two veterans at this table, so.
Their names are beyond the call. If I, if I remember correctly. Uh, the cross is forty dollars for two years.
For two events.
For two, in Washington. And for, for any veterans living or deceased.
I think there are going to be a few weeks also.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, um, also.
I don't have that. So you do.
I make a motion to get to a journal.
Second. All in favor?